Welcome to the May 6 Planning Board Meeting. We have a short agenda, but I don't know how long it will take. We have first on the agenda, we're going to start with the Three Lakeview property because David, who is here from Fleetwood Environmental, our conservation agent, I'm not sure what his schedule is, but we'll start with that. So I'm changing the agenda order a little bit. And then we're going to do the petition article from Danny Alsop, and then we'll end with the minutes. So to start, the Three Lakeview LPOD project was something that we granted a special permit for, I think it was last year, and they've asked for some revisions. And what we're here to do today is to decide, are those revisions significant enough that they require a new special permit? And you've all seen the email that I sent around from David Cameron? Good, okay, all right. So with that, I'm going to let the applicants explain to us why these are, they feel these are minor revisions that don't require a new special permit.
Good evening. My name is Brian Sider. I'm a civil engineering technician with Porset Land Services. David Potter is the designer of the house. And Lori Robbins, the owner's attorney. And we're representing, I guess that's, we are representing Setsy Aubrey in Leightonburg. Again, owners of Three Lakeview Drive. And I will start by recap. What was approved? Three Lakeview Drive is a property on the east side of Stockbridge Bowl. It has a significant amount of lake frontage on the lake. And there was an existing house sited here centrally in the property. The original special permit proposal was to demolish the existing house, build a new one, more or less in its same footprint, but adding a two-car garage and a screened porch. This project was approved after some revisions where we shifted the front of the porch back away from the lake so that it was no closer than the existing front of the house. So we're here today because the owners would like to revise the floor plan of the actual house they're being, they're building. I should also say the existing house has been demolished. Now the site is cleared with erosion controls up around the project site. And essentially, the reason for the redesign, or at least a significant portion of it, is because we had a second story above the garage, which was an additional guest bedroom. They wanted to take the guest, the second story and put it down in the first story so that it's all one-story living space. So in doing that, the new house, which it has elevation plans for, which I included in the packet. But the new house is slightly bigger in its actual footprint because of the addition of the bedroom. You can see on the zoning table that we provided. The new zoning table previously had approved a coverage of 2724 for the house. It's now 2988. That's the house and garage. I want to note that a lot of care was taken to reduce the increase in the size of the structure. In other ways, the garage is reduced to a one-car garage. So that's 120 or so square feet smaller. The screened-in porch is smaller. Part of that, we also took the stone terrace that was out front of the patio and moved it around to the side so it's no closer to the lake than the house. The house itself is on tiers. So it's elevated above the ground. So underneath is considered pervious area. It's not offsetting stormwater anyway. And then the garage, again, which has been reduced in size, the garage is on a concrete slab. And so we're really asking for a minor modification to the existing special permit, which was granted last June for this new house footprint versus the old one. And essentially, again, the same, the same location. It is no less, it's actually more conforming to the setbacks that are relevant.
So it's no more non-conforming?
Correct. So it was, no way we're measuring.
Right.
From the previous design. And moved the stone terrace.
So does anybody on the board have any questions? You've all seen David's email. This is sort of straightforward.
Just that, so have you reduced the footprint within the LPOD?
The overall footprint is slightly larger, but it's still less than the 10% coverage that's allowed within the LPOD. So I think we went from
2724 to 2988.
For the house, the total, the total increased from 6% of the coverage within the LPOD to 6.8%. So it's an additional 0.8% of the entire LPOD that's on this parcel, which is most of the property.
You see the elevations?
Yeah.
The thing that I like to see, the reduction in the building height.
Well, you'll be happy. 21. That was one of the problems. How high the house was. So this is an imported scan of what was previously approved with the higher height of
28?
Yeah, 2711 change. So now we're one story. And even though the original house had more square footage heated space with the second floor, we're less square footage on first floor than what was total square footage previously. But we had, still had to make the footprint a little bigger. But we're much smaller now. We're a low slope, 212 pitch. And we're only, the highest point of the house are these parapets each side of the living room. And that's
21.
21, so we're 28. That's nine feet lower, which is very desirable for the bowl and for the neighbors.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. It's also a nicer house. That's the front of the house as you come in. So instead of a two-car garage, we have a one-car garage. But we still need to park the second car. So the driveway got a little bigger because we have to park our car.
Can you explain that way to me? Because of the parking area now?
Well, we need to turn around because you can't turn around.
Right.
Can't back out on this road.
Right.
So we have the one-car garage, and we have the second parking space next to it. But that's all pervious. And then these are the, we have to be, driveway has to be 25 feet or 25 feet away from the wall. So plus our radius is to turn at 20, 20 degrees minimum. So this is the required minimum parking or turnout. Turn out and get into the driveway. So with two cars parked here, this is a two-car guest parking space.
And the driveway is pervious?
Impervious.
It's a gravel surface. Typically considered to be pervious.
That's the word.
Right. So this is the front of the house. Lakeside of the house, again, we were way up, way up here in the lake. Now we're much lower. So contemporary, lots of windows.
Yeah.
We also lowered the floor a couple inches because we could. Just being sensitive of all this, instead of being way up here with whatever that was up there. Or now the highest part is here. The actual roofs on both sides of these parapets are three feet lower.
Are there types of glass you can use to minimize bird strike?
Yep, you need glass to have your pass energy code.
So the stretch code?
Well, the actual new energy code is more stringent than the stretch code.
Okay.
It would comply with both, yes. In order to get these numbers now, you either have to go with triple-pane windows or you do dual pane with certain coatings on them, which help your numbers.
But they don't do anything for bird strike?
I don't know about bird strikes. Windows have to have coatings on them in order to pass the energy code. If there were no coatings on them, you wouldn't pass an energy anyhow.
I do want to note also, which I suppose is actually relevant, but when we went to the Conservation Commission, which this also needs to go back through the head and order conditions for this project. Because there's two trees proposed for removal in the driveway, we had proposed the planting of additional river birch trees along the lake. If you remember, this was all lawn right up in the lake before. So part of this project was to plant this 1,000 square feet of native shrubbery along the lake. We've now increased that to 1,200 square feet. So it's a 20% increase in the plantings while still maintaining some small openings to access the dock. So that was just part of the ones from the Conservation Commission, their request. So this was tentatively approved by the commission, but we had to submit it as amended final order by their request. So I think we're looking at getting approval there.
Okay. Any more questions? How does everyone feel about this? I'll start. It seems like the revisions seem minor enough to me that we, we wouldn't need to require another special permit. I will just say, Brian, that I did talk to Adam, our building inspector. He said you would need to file a new building permit application. Okay. Anyone else?
I don't know. The designs certainly, the revisions seem more attractive than what was originally proposed.
Yes.
Was there, was there some concern about the dock? I mean, it doesn't seem to be anything going on with that.
Well, that's a chapter 91.
That's not a part of this yet.
That's not part of it, yeah. So, all right. So if everybody's ready, I'll make a motion. Is that okay with you all?
Yeah.
Okay, I say I make a motion that the changes are minor enough not to require a new special permit, but they do require a new application with a building inspector. Do I have a second?
You got a second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, your honor.
Okay, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Very welcome.
Fantastic. I was overconfused with this. I was going to list you with my blinding research here. I have a conversation just with Sean Larry Konstein, Lennox EBA, about minor modifications like you're proposing. Can you do this?
Yes, we've talked about that, and I think the process is working just fine. But thank, thank you. David, thank you. You know, the next thing on the agenda is something that if you don't have to leave right away, you might be interested in listening in and potentially?
Yeah, I can stick around.
Okay, great. All right, so next up, we have a citizens' petition article. And this has to do with zoning. So the process here is that, is everyone familiar with a citizens' petition? So basically, 10 signatures, and it goes on the town warrant. But because this is addressing our zoning, the select board referred it to the planning board for us to comment and report on at the town meeting. So you all had a chance to look at the wording that's been proposed? Okay, all right. So Danny is here. And Danny, why don't you come on up and explain what you're interested in doing?
Oh, you're going over there?
Yes, please. Yeah, just, yeah, introduce yourself, please.
Bring down your neck, Wayne.
He likes it.
Well, let's see. You know, I've been interested in water and all that for a long time. And so this is, this is an opportunity that I've taken to talk about two things. One is groundwater and its relationship to our town's surface water supply, which is essentially everything that comes through Lake Averick and which our guys distribute to us. And I'm a customer. And by the way, I was at their meeting just at 4:30 today, and I'm still alive, so. Thank you.
Ready for more.
Don and the guys. And so I, I also look forward to the opportunity to talk a little bit about something which is unique to Stockbridge, like so many other things, which is that I believe we are the only town in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that has a water supply which is partially surface water from a surface watershed, that beautiful hillside that we own, that drains into Averick. But underneath it, we have a karst aquifer. We're the only town in Massachusetts that has, that is actually having, having both of those as our sources. And the karst aquifer is, it's bedrock. In this case, limestone or dolomite or marble, which is fractured. And then because of its chemistry, over thousands of years, this water comes down West Stockbridge Mountain and comes down that bench and soaks in to that area. It recharges that aquifer, that ground, that bedrock. And because of that, one fact about that bedrock that's so different, which is that when water goes through it, even if it's just slightly acid, it dissolves the rock away. And that's why we have certain areas of town where we have caves, for example, or where we have streams that flow on the surface of the ground. And then, then they go underground, and then they come back up again. And as the guys who've been working so hard on Ghul Meadow and those projects over there, they've been dealing with karst geology. And so where am I? I think I better look at the papers. Okay, so those two things. Groundwater and the karst aquifer. I am submitting, I'm going to read now. I am submitting two changes to our bylaw 6.7, Surface Water Supply Overlay District. My change is restore protection of groundwater to 6.7 in our current bylaw, the one that we have now today. For 30 years, from 1982, when Tom LaBelle was first able to find a reference to it, which probably means it was when it began, until February of 2013, the groundwater recharge areas of our town water supply enjoyed protection under our bylaws. Now that important protection disappeared when we voted for warrant Article 3 of the February 19, 2013 Special Town Meeting. It was complicated. At the Special Town Meeting, we took away GA, which was Groundwater Recharge Area. And I think we took away LPOD, which was Lake Pond Overlay District. And then we came back to it in May in the annual town meeting. And to correct, to protect the water supply, we created a new Section 6.7, Surface Water Supply Overlay District, SWSOD, which protects, quote, "surface waters used as sources of drinking water." And that limitation of surface waters is one of the changes that I'm proposing. By adding upon the water quality of surface waters, insert the words "and groundwater." Okay, that's my first proposed change. The second has to do with, I didn't want to take on, sorry, Don, the Stockbridge Bowl, the rest of the town. I wanted to narrow it down to drinking water. So I, the second in the description following the words, "the surface water," the SWSPOD, shall include, I say, insert the words, "the recharge area of the aquifer connected to Lake Averick." And so I'm, I'm trying to, you know, specialize this thing. And, okay. So the rest of what I have here is, is just kind of background. I've already told you.
So one thing, I'll just
Yeah, sure.
The boards, one thing I should have said earlier is that this was on the agenda as a citizens' petition at the last select board meeting. Can you hear me?
I might come over.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
And since we're on a really tight timeframe in terms of getting a recommendation, I offered to schedule the, the public hearing will be May 15th, which is a Thursday. Okay, and that's for the planning board. And I think I sent something out to the board earlier about that. So tonight, what I wanted to do, by putting this on the agenda, this is just an opportunity for you all to ask questions, absorb it, and learn, or just listen. And then the public hearing will be on the 15th. And that's where the planning board will come up with its recommendation or comment for the annual town meeting. So this is just sort of a, as I saw it, this was a way to have, you know, public hearings are a little, they're a legal process. They're a little more formal. So this was more of an opportunity to just have a relaxed conversation with Danny. So, you know, that's, that's the, that's the timeline here, okay?
And town meeting is the 20th?
19.
The 19th.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
On 6.7.3, since wastewater treatment works, approve for the treatment of contaminated ground and surface waters.
I'm sorry.
6.7.3
Yes.
Says that wastewater treatment works for the treatment of contaminated ground and surface water. So they're already treating that?
That's good, yes. That's a, that's a plus. I mean, I'm all for that.
So you, in addition, you want something added to that before they treat it?
Well, one, thank you for pointing that out. What I want to do is, is protect the water as it's coming down before it gets to the treatment plant as much as possible. I'm aware that back in 1995, when we had the state hydrogeologist come into town, and you recall, he drove, he drilled some test wells around. And because we were thinking we might be able to either have a backup system of groundwater wells or that we might be able to replace the use of our open, beautiful lake and turn that to recreation and so on. And what we discovered was that the filtration costs were so high. They climb fairly rapidly if your water quality gets, you know, low. So it's, I mean, I think that our guys do a really good job in keeping that watershed in pristine condition. But, you know, we do have, and we have, we do have issues from time to time. And I would like to reinforce that as best I can upstream as well as support the good work that's done in our sewer, in our water treatment plant.
So you'd want to treat the groundwater with chemicals in order to?
No, no, I want to, I want to prevent and protect the areas, particularly the GA, which is what we lost when it, we took it, we voted it out, which was the, GA was the groundwater recharge part of our watershed. It's interesting that our watershed is recharged by rain. And then the question is, how does that rain reach Lake Averick? Where the, you know, where the pipe is, the underground? uh, the underground entrance to our system? And um, and how do we, while it's making that journey either down the slopes and, and, and down the waterways or through the bedrock, or getting into the bedrock and then moving through the bedrock to Lake Averick? How do we, how do we keep both of those systems as clean as we can?
What is part of that? Flow goes through private property?
Part of the um, I'm not exactly sure of the boundaries of the uh, of the, of the watershed. But I believe that uh, there are homes on um, uh, Tree Farm Road, uh, a couple of them, which are within uh, that area. And um, quiet and all is entirely, as I understand it, on town sewer and town water now. So that's really not a concern for them or for the users of the, of the water system. Did I answer your question?
Um, Danny.
Sort of.
Have a um.
Yeah, sorry.
Do you have a, um, so one thing I, you know, this is all quite new for most of us, I think. And so I did spend a little time speaking with the state hydrogeologist.
Have I?
No, I did.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Which one?
Brian, Brian Yellen.
Pardon?
Brian Yellen.
Okay, he's the state geologist.
Yeah, hydrogeologist.
Is the hydrogeologist, yes.
Yeah, so.
And you guys know that, that, that I was the one who put the town in touch with UMass and with David Bout and first Steve Mayby and now Brian, who succeeded him uh, to try and get the best uh, study we can get over there at, at, at our water supply.
That's the safe yield study?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so Brian seems to be working on that.
Yes, Brian is working on that, yeah.
And um, one question I had was, you referenced the Stockbridge draft open space plan from two thousand and four refers to the aquifer as producing forty gallons a minute.
I'm sorry, could you start over?
Yeah. The Stockbridge draft open space plan from two thousand and four.
Yes.
Refers to the aquifer as producing forty gallons a minute. And you say that's on page thirty-four.
It's not, it's not on thirty-four. I had the wrong number, I think it's on page fourteen.
Okay, so my questions are, do you have a copy of this open space plan from two thousand and four? So that, you know, we can see it.
Sure.
And then where was um, where was the result, where was, they must have drilled to get that forty gallons? To get that number, so where, where was that done?
I don't know the location of that, um, of what they're referring to. I, I am making an assumption because that piece of knowledge followed closely on Howard Mott's uh, study, which um, uh, John Biaco and Tom Stokes and I uh, enacted. And we, we went before the town for fifty thousand dollars for that groundwater study. But I don't have a copy of the results of that study. But there, there is one in the town uh, office because it was, it was done for the town, not for the water and sewers.
So the, the open space plan that you're referring to here?
That's, that's the, that's interesting, that comes, the sequence is this. In nineteen seventy-two, Nicholas Radcliffe, who is the USGS geologist, who we saw wandering around our yards, drilling holes in the ground. If you were like me, went up to him and said, "What are you doing here?" Anyway, he did the bedrock analysis of Stockbridge, the map. And, and.
So when you say the Stockbridge, I'm sorry, interrupted. If I just, just ask a question, when you say the Stockbridge quadrangle, you're just talking about the town of Stockbridge?
It, the Stockbridge quadrangle is a USGS topo quadrangle or rectangle within which most of Stockbridge lies. And um, he, so he mapped the bedrock and particularly, you know, going from Monument Mountain up the valley uh, to um, to the south end of Lennox and um, and east over Rattlesnake and uh, like that. And what happened was, he, he identified the geology as being underlaid by this limestone and dolomitic rock, which is what the water can make these tubular flow channels in. And uh, and because of that, uh, we, I talked to him and, and, and we got interested in, in uh, in, in trying to find a backup series of groundwater wells for the town. So we would have a backup system in case something happened to our reservoir. And also, we were thinking we might be able to switch to groundwater and avoid the costs of water filtration, which are very high. And Matt Mott drilled a lot of wells and pumped them and didn't come up with anything good except on the west side, uh, up on that bench of, above Averick. And also um, at the north end of Monument, at Donovan's gravel bed. That was also a good one. And uh, the other one that's really good in town is under um, Rattlesnake. And on one side, it comes out as where the Hill Water Company used to be uh, and crosses Rattlesnake Mountain Road. And on the other side is an amazing spring, which is known as the Hylong Spring and which produces this beautiful sixty to eighty gallons of nitrate just coming up out of the ground and feeding Lily Pond Brook.
And that was, that was based on Mott's work, that these?
Well, uh, Radcliffe.
Radcliffe.
Radcliffe, and then followed up by Mott. And um, and that's how the town got aware of groundwater.
So do you have any, um, are there any documents tied to this work? Is there any?
I mean, other than just storytelling? Yes, uh, I suppose I do. Um, uh, I mean, certainly, we, we have uh, the, we have the uh, references to Radcliffe. We have um, the town master plan ninety, in ninety-six. You helped me with this, finding the town master plan and the reference there. And the reference in the master plan in ninety-six is then picked up by the open split base draft plan in two oh two-four. It's exactly the same language.
And the open space plan from two thousand and four?
Yeah, it was a draft.
Okay.
Yeah, so uh, um.
But none of these other discoveries of groundwater were sufficient to be considered as a alternate source or a main source for the town.
Well, first of all, it's wonderful that we know that they're there. And um, and uh, and I think that's really important because our official backup for if we do have some real problem with uh, our, our open reservoir, which is a vulnerable, vulnerability, is the town of Lennox. And um, you know, they are growing and, growing fast and, and, and building new infrastructure. And one wonders about their ability to really um, do more than just, you know.
Have you seen the aquifer that's mapped on, on the online maps?
Well, the interesting thing is.
It's underneath sort of, I mean, it runs in that area where the gravel pit is.
Yes.
There's Burley property. And that's the only aquifer that shows, at least on the online maps.
Um, that's the only aquifer that's?
The one aquifer that shows on the online maps.
Um, the other aquifer that shows, that is um, is the uh, the aquifer for the Hylong Spring. And uh.
I haven't seen it. I looked at the map today. Now, the one that's over underneath in the Goddardan area is listed as a medium yield aquifer. They should be medium yield and high yield. And that was the only one, I'll look again.
You didn't see the one to the west of, uh, okay. Um, of, of the Stockbridge Bowl. You have a question?
Just, I think we're getting off track here. The, the, the proposal for the question is about surface water in a certain area, uh, not about the aquifers and what's available elsewhere in town. As I understand it.
Correct.
It's about a certain area and about a certain wording in this request. And I think we should focus on that and what the wording actually does change in our current bylaw.
So there's some, you know, material that's referenced. And that's why I ask, because I, for me, you know, and we all have different interests here. But for me, it would be sort of helpful to see some of this historical data from Radcliffe or Mott, you know, and just to um, you know, just to inform my understanding of this, this topic, which is.
Has there been an issue with the quality of the water coming into the reservoir to this point? As I understand it, it's been very, very good.
I think that um, right now, what we're, we're studying is, we're, we're under a study right now um, with the UMass guys, with Bout and Yellen. And um, and we're dealing with um, a question of yield. What is our, what is our safe yield that we can, we can say that we can supply so much water? Uh, which is really necessary to protect our downtown businesses and also to enable development of, you know, growth. And uh, and part of, part of that uh, understanding is, what pers, I may have already said this, what percentage of the water that's coming into the reservoir is coming from the surface flow into the reservoir? And what percentage is coming from the groundwater? And, and how the, what the, the percentage is and how that changes in periods of drought, which we are, we have skirted, we've had some close calls uh, in the last few years with drought. And um, and I think that's the real motivation for why we're, why we have this study now is to, is to um, really uh, see what kind of room we've got in, in our system. Yes.
Wouldn't it behoove us to wait until we see how this study comes up with the final, rather than change the bylaw now? Why don't we wait and see what this study comes up with before we change the bylaw?
Well, I think that's a very good question.
I think the, the, the petition here is talking about, at, at some point, there was a surface water protection overlay district established. Okay, and so, as in most of these zoning uh, bylaws here, it explains, okay, this is the purpose of that uh, district. And this is the description of that district. And so this petition appears to be making changes only to that.
I'm sorry?
This petition seems to be making changes only to those qualifiers. What is the, in other words, six point seven one is the purpose. What's the purpose of the surface water supply protection overlay district? And then, following that, what is the description of the surface water supply protection overlay district? So the changes that are in this petition are only affecting those portions. Um, which, which, um, well, they, they, they seem relatively minor. Um, it, it doesn't, it, it, all these other questions that are being asked seem to, seem to have to do with all the other sections of the surface water protection overlay district. So I don't, I, I don't, I don't see a real problem with it. I mean, we, we recognize that Lake Averick is not only um, recharged by rainwater, but by significant amount of groundwater that come down off of West Stockbridge Mountain. I, that's a given, that's, that's been proven, I don't think there's any. So as part of the surface water protection overlay district, of course, we should be protecting that as well.
Well, except that we're in the middle of a study that's gonna identify that exact thing. So why are we gonna change a bylaw midstream when this study is gonna, hopefully, and they, and they don't know if this is going to identify, as I understand it, where this water will come from, even after they do their study? Now, this is the most in-depth study, I've talked to commissioners to myself. This is the most in-depth study they will have done to date. And they are not saying that they'll know at that point what the percentages are.
But that, that would affect more of seven, six point seven point three, what comes up in prohibited uses when they have the results of that study. Not the description of what the surface water supply overlay district is and what its purpose is. That's the distinction I'm trying to make.
I mean, I guess one thing, question I have is the, the header here is surface water supply protection overlay district. But you're really talking about um, groundwater recharge, so.
I had a problem with that when I first looked at it as well. But the groundwater is what becomes the surface water, basically. The groundwater is what is, we have a surface water supply system for the town. What's, what, how does water get in there? How does water get in the bucket? It gets in the bucket from the sky and it gets in the bucket from the groundwater. So, yes, at first I said, yeah, well, maybe there should be a, a, a groundwater supply protection overlay district. But as I read further into it, it's all one and the same as far as what the town is using as a water supply.
So, um, David, I'm sorry to put you on the spot here, but I understand if you can't answer this question. can you, I don't even really know what question to ask.
This is, this is.
Groundwater, groundwater recharge area.
No.
Is that, um, I guess, you know, if we're changing something here and there are consequences that people need to understand, um, that's something I think is really important. Because I've been to enough town meetings where there have been changes that people later said, wow, you know, I just voted, I voted on something that was not in my own self-interest because I didn't understand it. So.
And this is very quick. This is gonna be.
So Da, David, thank you. Can you talk a little bit, I mean, is that, I know you're, you're wetland scientist, so maybe this is too geol, too much geology oriented, but, well, DEP, um, when I talked to Brian, one thing he said was, you really need to be talking to DEP regulatory. So do you have any comment here?
Um, yeah, I'm happy to weigh in. I, I haven't had a ton of time to look at this and research it yet.
And you know what? The public hearing is on the fifteenth, so if you, you know, I totally.
It would be really great if we could do something interactive with Mass GIS. And so I could show you what my initial um, poking around. And so I could show you what my initial poking around has. I, one of the questions I would have if I were the board is what, how the geographical extent of its jurisdiction under the, under section 6.7 would change if the words, I think, and recharge area were added. I think that was part of the proposition.
Um, yeah, yeah.
Right. So right now, the geographical extent of the town's jurisdiction with respect to this part of the bylaw is, is fairly limited. It's Lake Averick. It's everything within 400 feet of Lake Averick. And I think it's everything within 200 feet of the tributaries to Lake Averick. That's, that's my cursory understanding of it. So if I were someone in town who was charged with voting yea or nay on, on these proposals, I would want to know, especially if I had property within the watershed, how that would change, how I might be able to use my property. Because I think that the section on prohibited uses is pretty prescriptive for what you can and can't do within that geographical area of jurisdiction. That would change if recharge waters was added, or recharge area was added. So I don't know if the petitioner has any idea what that, what the geographical extent of that recharge area. I assume it wouldn't go beyond the drainage area, watershed to Lake Averick. I'm not a hydrogeologist, but I'm a pretty decent general environmental scientist, and that's how I, I understand how water moves on top of and through landscape. And as it stands right now, based on just a little bit of research I did on Mass GIS, it looks like most of the contributing watershed area to Averick Lake is, is already protected and owned by the town.
Is already protected by the town?
It's already owned by the town. It's part of the, it's part of the water management's property.
Right.
Like, most of it's been bought up and it's, it's currently enforested, undeveloped use. So I think some of those questions seem to be asked. You know, what does this mean in practical terms in terms of if we change the geographical extent of jurisdiction, what is that going to mean to potentially your adjacent property owners? That's what I would want to know if I was working on this.
So, I mean, we don't even know what the extent of the, do we know what the extent of the change, you know, geographically?
I think, I think if the petitioner is asking to, to include or add to the town's jurisdiction and the recharge area, I think that's how I understand it. I, I guess I would ask the petitioner to try to graphically depict what that change is going to mean in terms of the town's jurisdiction under this part of the, the bylaw.
Does, does that seem reasonable?
I think that's a very astute summing up of, of my interest in proposing these changes. And thank you for that.
So, but, you know, basically you would want to show geographically.
I'm sorry?
You would want to show geographically so that, you know, people in this area understand.
Well, I think that what the gentleman has said is there are two issues, this geography, but there's also a question of jurisdiction. And what I've noticed, I've, I've gone and spoken to the Conservation Commission and discussed with them of what they're, they feel their jurisdiction is in relation to groundwater in a karst environment. And the sense that I've come away with is that they feel their jurisdiction is largely, or here you go, speaking for a town board, watch your health. But largely to do with surface waters. And because of that, I, I made some phone calls to DEP myself. And I spoke to the Director of the Water Division, Dan Hall. And he put me in touch with the Western Mass Section Chief on drinking water, Andrew Kelly, and who is a hydrogeologist himself. And when we talked about jurisdiction, I believe that what Mr. Kelly said to me was, we don't regulate karst, the kinds of issues that you're talking about in a karst aquifer, unless there is a town ordinance or a town bylaw. And so I think at that point, I felt I was correct in my feeling that, and that CONCOM may also have been correct in their feeling that in order for them to take a position which would be backed up by the DEP, we do need groundwater mentioned in our, in our bylaw that. So I, I hope I approached the.
David used to be with the DEP. I'd be interested to hear your comment on that, David.
Oh, yeah. I didn't work in the drinking water program, but I, I worked in the same bureau. And I know Dan Hall. He's a very competent guy. I, I, again, I, I would go back to my original question. So what, I'm, I'm just going to read, but I understand the petitioner's, one of the, the things the petitioner is asking for, bear with me, I just want to find it. One of the requests for a change is under section 6.7.2 description. And this, this is a description of what the surface water supply protection overlay district is. Okay? Following the words, the SWSPOD shall include, insert the words, this is the request, the recharge area of the aquifer connected to Lake Averick. So I'm going to go back and, and, and just propose again that that should be graphically depicted somewhere and presented to the town voters. That would be what I, what I suggest. Because that's, that's going to have implications for how that section of the zoning bylaw is implemented.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does. Um, Tom Stokes, you have your hand up?
He did.
Been a while.
Yeah.
Don, you want to come on up and introduce yourself?
Thank you.
Thank you. About Lake Drive, I just want you to emphasize to the commission the importance of groundwater per se, per se, to the town. I believe the entire northwest side of the lake is, is serviced by wells. In my case, we have three houses on the well. Lake Drive, I believe everybody is on the well. And the importance of, one thing I liked about what Denny's petition was that it reemphasizes the importance of groundwater itself. And I'd encourage you to consider that in your deliberations.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. What is the time, the study that we were talking about earlier? Does anyone, is anyone aware of what the timeline for that might be?
Yes. As I understand it, the, the current water study, or this current study on where the water comes from started in September, and as I understand it, finishes in September.
It's going to finish in the middle, middle winter, midwinter.
So, I mean, they're right in the midst of that. I think what David said is important that we need to understand this fully for any number of reasons, let alone its complexity. And I certainly would like to dig into it a lot more. I'd like to have our water commissioner come to a meeting and maybe elaborate a bit on his thoughts about this, because I, I certainly don't understand all of this as I read it. And I've tried to read it, but.
Do you want me to invite, I can invite Mike to the public hearing?
Well, I just think that if something of this magnitude, and I, I think it's huge, I don't want to try to rush this for the town meeting.
Our options are very open here, Wayne. I mean, we can, we, there's a whole spectrum of what we can do. We can just approve this, or we can say we think, you know, at the town meeting, the comment, the report could be as simple as we think this needs more study. So, you know, we can, we don't, we can say we don't think this merits review, but, you know, that wouldn't be my position. I've gotten pretty interested in this whole business of karst geography. And, you know, I think we, but from my standpoint, I would prefer that we start with an understanding of, of where we are as a town. And.
If we have an issue here to begin with.
Well, there's other, you know, how many, I don't even know how many people are on well water, how many people are on the Lake Averick, and we're very focused on Lake Averick right now, but what about all the people who are on, on wells, you know? So I'd sort of prefer more of a bird's eye approach and view that just sort of takes a look at how the water is, is working for us townwide. But that's not what we're, you know, what we're presented with here is a citizen's petition. So.
May I speak to the citizens' petition? I'm sorry, I couldn't get off mute before and.
Yeah.
And I wasn't able to hear what David had to say. It just didn't come across on the connection here.
Well, I'll tell you, what I'll tell you. What, can I, can I just tell you what David said so you have that context? What he said was that he thought it would be important that we graphically depict the area being described as, as groundwater recharge and present that to the voters so they know exactly where they fall and what this area encompasses.
Okay. Just quickly, a note in terms of historical reference. During the study that Denny referred to, as I was on the Board of Selectmen at the time, and at the time, we were looking at three sort of areas where groundwater could be as significant as an alternative source. And one was on, off Cherry Hill on Swan Property. Another was off Ice Glen Road. And a third was off Bean Hill Road. And there was talk that there was an aquifer there, and we were just concerned primarily as a backup system that we may need in the future. And on the basis of the Bean Hill property, which I think may be connected to the Hyalong property that Denny was referring to, we, there was a a request before the Board of Selectmen to have a significant portion of property put in a Conservation Commission. This was the Wallach Conservation Commission property. And we requested that they amend that CR to allow for a commercial or town system to pump water should there be a need for that groundwater aquifer access. As the CR was then written, it would have prohibited a larger mechanism to withdraw the groundwater. And we said the town needed it as a backup, or we should keep that option open. So this is just an example of why having groundwater reintroduced into the bylaw could be useful in future events, because the fact that this was mentioned in the study gave us a reason to insist that this could be an option in the future. So it's just a matter of historical reference that I thought I would mention. And may not be completely pertinent to the discussion here, but I thought I'd mention it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I thought your idea about asking Mike to be there on the 15th is a good one.
Um, yeah.
Seems obvious.
Are we going to need to vote at that point? Or what's the, with this petition, what are our options with this petition?
Well, at the public hearing, you know, it's advertised. And people, you know, can come. It's a legal proceeding. And we'll take comments from the audience. And, you know, we'll listen to what people have to say. And of course, I assume Denny, Denny knows the date. I gave that to him, the 15th.
I'm sorry?
The 15th, the public hearing.
Yes.
Yeah, he knows that. So, Denny, you know, we'll present. And 15th at 6:30. And then at a certain point, when the board feels we're ready to deliberate as a board, just like with our special permits, we'll close the public hearing. And then we'll, you know, talk about it as a board and, and come up with a recommendation or comment for, for town meeting. You know, it could be something as simple as we just feel this needs more study. But that's up to.
I, I think it absolutely does.
Is there a timeline in terms of responding to the petition here? I mean.
So the petition will be on the town, at the, on the warrant for the annual town meeting, on the 19th. That's a done deal. It's just done. That's been, it's submitted, and the legal process is that it's been certified because it, it had, the signatures were checked, their addresses and so on. And so it goes on the, the town warrant. And because at the select board, the select, at the select board meeting, they voted to send it to the, because it's a zoning thing, they voted to send it to the planning board for a public hearing. So, you know, we've got it.
Okay.
Okay.
Why haven't we had a public?
I was going to say, we're stuck with it.
Why hasn't he had a public hearing before now, before like petitions coming out a month before town meeting? And now we're having a public hearing five days before the town meeting? Why, why, it just seems so rushed all of a sudden. Okay, now we got to vote on this. Like, if they've known about it since last winter, why are we all hearing about it five days before a town meeting?
Well, we can, again, we can decide that we don't feel we've had enough time, and we can make that recommendation to, to, to the voters on, at town meeting that we, the planning board feels that more time is needed to understand it.
Having this discussion at town, town meeting seems.
Sketchy.
Yeah, it seems, seems at the very least time consuming.
So I think, you know, what I want is that we, I wanted for us today to start talking about it and understand it. This is something that is of real concern to Denny and to, to others. And, you know, so we have this before us and, you know, let's see if we can, can figure it out. We've had a good start today. Thank you, David. And, you know, and we'll just, you've, you've got some, some information. I'm going to send you a review article that, that I downloaded from a journal called Earth Science Reviews. And just in case you're interested, if you are, let me know. It's on, it's, it's more on the whole karst environment. But that's pretty interesting. Karst refers to an area in Slovenia. And if you look online, you'll see like in that area, these, this wild looking formations, you know, that are part of this whole, that go with this karst territory. It's this soft stone, sandstone, marble. And, you know, they've been worked by, by different forces. So, you know, it's interesting. And there is, there is karst geology, as I understand it, in Stockbridge. And, you know, and just thinking of the town as a whole, we did have this, this kind of amazing landslide, you know, over by Clark Pond that was so loud that people over, Pat Flynn told me on Park Street she heard it. So, you know, I. So, you know, I'd be interested in just thinking about the town more from a bird's eye standpoint. And with, very much with this in mind, but that's just me. So, um, you know, we'll have the public hearing on, on 15th. And um, let me know if you want to see this article and I'll send it to you. And, you know, start thinking about it, write down your questions. And um, you know, get ready for a, for a discussion.
This has to be different than our regular.
Yes.
Monthly. Like, we can't be on our regular.
So, yeah, because, you know, because it was, it was a little bit, because of the annual town meeting, we're out of time. So, uh, the, the options were that yes, I could have said, no, I won't put it on the agenda, but I felt like this was something that people were concerned about. And I wanted to give them a chance to talk about it.
I just think it's rushed.
Well, in that, you know, that'll be a board decision if, if, you know, if a majority of the board. Um, and this is not, I think this is just a majority. I'll double check. Um, but I'm pretty sure this one would be a majority, not a, not a two-thirds. Gary, do you know?
I don't.
Okay, so, you know, it'll be a board discussion and a board vote.
And we're 6:30 on the 15th?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And then we're still having our regular one also?
Well, no, we don't, we never have our meetings on Election Day.
Oh, that's how that falls? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, very good.
So Nancy.
Oh, that's right.
Are you okay with that? I mean, it's.
I thought the same thing, yeah.
I, I can't make it on.
On the 15th?
No.
Okay. I was gonna sweeten the pot and bring a cake.
Strawberry shortcake when I go home.
That's right, you're such a good baker. I can't really win you over with sweets.
Be with cake.
All right, so we have minutes still on the, has everybody had a chance to? Anything else, Denny? Or, we good?
Just thank you, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Whenever this comes out, uh, out of this, because of your, this process, it will certainly be better for the.
We'll try, yeah, we'll do our best. Okay, so did everyone have a chance? Second?
Second.
Second.
The minutes.
Yeah, the minutes.
Oh, yeah.
All in favor? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second, favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you.